All right, board members. It is 4:30, so it's time for our announced work session. We do have a call. Ms. LeBrecque has sent word that she will be on her way. And so I will call this meeting of the Granville County Board of Education to order. Ms. Williams, will you offer our invocation, please?
Yes. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we come to the official close of one school year and begin our next school year, we thank you for seeing us through the difficult days of the pandemic and helping us make decisions to try and protect our children and their families and our teachers and staff. We thank you so much for all of the educators and staff who perform their duties so well under stressful circumstances. These past months, we have truly learned that we never know what the future holds. But we stand before you today asking for wisdom, patience, and grace as we move forward and conduct the business of this board for the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Dr. McKnight, will you lead our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board members. Our first item of business this afternoon is the approval of meeting minutes. There on board docs, you'll see you have two sets of minutes, May 17th, 2021, and then our work session of June 10th, 2021. What would be the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that both sets of minutes be approved as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Anderson and a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any further discussion? All right, see none. If you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, next we move to 3.1, adjustments to our agenda. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chair, we have some adjustments to the agenda this evening. Mrs. Day will present item number 7.02. Mr. Connor is not with us this evening, so Mrs. Day will present that item. We also have item 6.04. That has already been added to the agenda. That is a speech contract for services. Since we do not meet again until August, we needed to go ahead and bring that contract for student services forth this afternoon. And that will be added, that has already been added. That is item number 6.05. That was added after the Thursday posting. I'm sorry, 6.04. That has already been added, but that was after our Thursday posting. So we will need attention given to that. And this evening, we also, and that is over $100,000, we're also needing to add the pink sheet in your folder, which are our board meeting dates for next school year, and on the back, our board meeting work session dates for next school year. This is the pink sheet in your folder. We will make that item number 6.05.
All right. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Board members, do you have any adjustments? All right, you've heard the adjustments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have our superintendent report. Dr. McLean?
Good afternoon, Chairman Richardson, Vice Chairman Houlihan, to our board members, parents, guests, friends, and everyone viewing. This afternoon officially concludes the 21-22 school year. Boy, was it a year of learning, growing, decision-making like never before, researching, creating, and some very tough calls. And I would just like to publicly thank everyone in our district and in our community for their support, their patience, and their understanding. Even though none of us had a crystal ball, did we? It was certainly a year, and we made it. The last 15 months have been full of possibilities, trials, opinions, and new ways of accomplishing tasks. We did just about everything all of us could, and frankly, I still believe in the power of unity and extending grace. Our summer quest and summer adventures programs are well underway. We are serving over 1,600 pupils this summer in our buildings at eight locations, elementary, middle, and high schools. Several assistant principals are on-site acting as principals this summer, and numerous teachers, teacher assistants, clerical staff, bus drivers, counselors, CNI team members, central office staff, nurses, social workers, child nutrition workers are all pulling together to serve our children very well as we work to fill gaps made by the COVID pandemic. Allow me to publicly thank everyone for their efforts. Things are going exceptionally well in our camp-style learning trajectory. Our book bus is also rolling, and I encourage everyone to please, please visit our book bus as it goes across the span of our county. Every child receives a free book, and for myself and board members, as you know, this has become a signature program for us, and it's designed to serve students between grades pre-K through the 12th grade. So for our viewing audience, if you have youngsters at home, please visit our book bus and encourage reading 20 minutes every single day. Our summer graduation is scheduled for August 3rd, and that will take place at 9:00 a.m. at our central office. This will be a drive-through ceremony, and that is always a wonderful time. So if you don't have a graduate, we do ask you to view that, for that is still a special moment in those youngsters' lives. Thanks to our incredible students, parents, and teachers, we still tested 95% of our students on their state assessments. Hats off to all of you who worked with our school administration to get that done. To date, however, we have not heard how the data will be used, but we plan to use it as formative information as we matriculate back into our buildings this fall. And yes, we are planning on serving students five days a week. In terms of statewide assessments, when we meet again, I plan to provide updates on the new social studies curriculum, the updated budget, and the testing and accountability update, as well as the possible home hold harmless provision, and so much more. So please keep those fingers crossed for bills that are on the floor right now, and let's continue to monitor legislation. Now, as our board continues working on building consolidation matters, it is important everyone know, I, as the superintendent, also take the charge of internal reorganization and consolidation seriously. Restructuring our organization is critically important, so that is what I've done internally with my team. And this afternoon, I'm going to ask Ms. Lynn to assist me. Lynn Henderson is with us tonight, board members. We're going to pass around a green folder and, as promised, share with our board at this time the new reorganization chart internal to our district whereby positions have been captured and cut and others have been moved for better service delivery. As such, this will allow us to streamline resources in every imaginable way and reduce reliance on local and state funds. Yes, we have reduced central office positions that rely on local dollars. We are also using our CARES and ESER grant funds to provide greater support to our schools while we can. But I want to remind everyone, those are timed dollars that will run out in the very near future. So this summer, Granville County Public Schools is still on the move and making every minute and every dollar count for our students. Mentioning such, please do not forget to take advantage of our many academic resources at your fingertips this summer, as well as our child feeding program. Our child nutrition department has done a fantastic job with our child nutrition services going across the span of our district this summer. If you know of a child that is hungry, please make certain to visit one of our child nutrition sites. So in our green folders, board members, if you would just allow me for a moment to walk you through what we have, as promised. You will find on the top a document that explains our new leadership organizational structure has now been downsized, and the restructuring is now horizontal and much more flat than it once was. This streamlining will increase our efficiencies and reduce costs and better strategically position our district for in the future. We have eliminated one assistant superintendent position at a rate of 33%, a reduction in the number of director-level salary positions at the central office level from 16 to 12, and we've restructured and downsized the entire CNI and Student Services Department. We've shifted multiple district-based positions to school-based positions, and we are now utilizing grant funding to pay for school-based positions. If you turn to the very first page, you will see the structure of our new curriculum and instruction team. You'll see Dr. Winborn at the helm as an associate superintendent. We did not replace Dr. Myrick's position. Dr. Winborn is in that role. His old role will now become an executive director position, not at an assistant superintendent pay. We now have directors, and you will see what is school-based opposed to grant-funded positions. If you go to the next page, you're able to see the span of control that includes you as our board at the top, myself under you with our clerk to the board and the administrative assistant to both myself and the board with our associate superintendent, within an assistant superintendent. You will see the positioning of the two executive directors, and then we have directors. This looks quite different than it did several years ago, even last year. As not to spend the entire evening on this document, I'm very happy to sit and explore with you in much more detail, much greater detail, and we are going to email this out to you as well so that we can answer very specific questions, Mr. Chair. But our hope is by August, we will have this up for everyone in our community to see as well. This was something we have been saying we were going to be able to do, but we had to have some positions and some slots in order to be able to do it. So, Mr. Chair, I wanted to share this. I promised this at the end of June, and so tonight I wanted to bring this forth.
So?
Yes, sir. This concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions for the superintendent?
Chair, I'd like to compliment our superintendent. I know that this is always hard to do, and it looks really good. I think that it's a real good step in the right direction.
Thank you.
You know, we've had issues with people talking about the number of positions in the central office and not realizing so many of those are paid with grant funds. But I think it's really good that you're sending a message that you're sending, and I sure hope that this is shared with every commissioner
Yes, sir.
and other people that are key in our communities. So, thank you. Job well done.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, board members, now we're going to move into our section for board reports. As I was preparing my remarks for today, I was trying to think of something witty or full of wisdom, or at least a cheap laugh or something. But the best I can come up with are just this, is just I want to thank everyone. We are at the end of a school year, a difficult, trying school year. You've heard that over and over. But I just want to thank our students who have hung in there and who have tried to make the best of a situation. They have often adapted much quickly and better than we have. Our families who have entrusted their children to us, who continue to, and see that they are as valued in being part of the family of Granville County Public Schools. And then to our educators and staff led by our superintendent and her team. Just very thankful for all the long hours, the innovative thinking, the rethinking, again, after we've made a decision and having to go back. Just thank you so much for all that you do. And just to you, board members, it's not been easy for you either, but we will continue to keep plotting forward and trying to make the very best decisions that we can for students. And so I would encourage you, the work's not done. We still have things to do, and you're not going to take a break during the summer. You're going to get a couple of weeks off, but then we're going to be hard back at it and continue consolidation and getting ready for the new school year. But I just want to publicly thank everyone for what they've done to make this year what it has been. So it'll definitely go down in the history books. Any other comments from board members? All right.
Could I make one quick one? If any of you have not participated in the book bus and you get a chance, it is really, really fun. And it's, you know, a great way to see kids and their eyes open when they get their book and the meal and all that good stuff. And I understand, if I'm correct, that ACIM is providing the snacks for all of these kids. And what a wonderful, wonderful thing. So I was at Stovall Shaw last week, and the people who were there just having a great time and laughing and carrying on, and it's just fabulous. So if you get a few minutes, even if it's last minute, I really, they love seeing board members, let me tell you. Those teachers and stuff love it. So if you get a chance, it's great. It's a lot of fun, and we all know we need some fun right now. Thanks.
All right. Any other board members? All right, moving into our committee reports, we've had one committee meet since our last meeting. Dr. Winborn convened the operations committee for a topic that will be discussed momentarily. So I'll just ask those committee members, if you don't mind, hold until we discuss that once we get there. But the rest of our committees have not met since our last board meeting. All right, and so moving into our first, our first policy piece is actually what came from the operations committee, 6.01. We're going to discuss fire alarm systems, Butlerston Middle and West Oxford. And so, Dr. McLean?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Once again, I'm going to turn this right over to Dr. Winborn, please, committee.
Thank you, Dr. McLean. Good afternoon, board members. So we convened the operations committee last week to discuss an issue that has arisen with our fire alarm systems at two of our schools. West Oxford Elementary School and Butlerston Middle School, both have very old systems that the fire marshal has instructed us need to be replaced. We had tried to repair them, but the cost of a potential repair was nearly more than half of what it would be to replace, and it would really just sort of be putting a Band-Aid on the problem. So we moved forward with the process of having both these systems replaced. We reached out to an engineering company out of Raleigh that specializes in the design of fire alarm systems and other industrial mechanical systems, and they provided a scope of work for both of these jobs so that we could put it out to bid, so that people were pricing on the same work. So we put those bids out this spring, late this spring, and the bids that came back shocked us. They were very, very high. We had budgeted about $125,000 per job based on a previous fire alarm that we had installed at JF Webb High School, which was about $100,000 plus or minus. So we felt like 125 was probably, you know, a good budgeting number. However, the combined cost of the two lowest bids was $560,000. So more than $300,000 than what we originally bid, what we originally budgeted, excuse me. So that posed a dilemma that I felt needed to be brought to the operations committee. And so board members and I met, and we discussed, and went over all the details, and then we reviewed some options to consider for funding. And what I have pulled up here is sort of the result of that conversation, which was an email that was drafted by myself and Mr. Richardson with the input of the other three board members. That was delivered, hand-delivered to him last week, asking the county to assist with the funding, the additional funding of this project. So we have not heard a response yet, except that they, you know, they had received it. And I do believe they have a meeting coming up in early July, the 6th. So it's likely that matter will be taken up then. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions anyone may have.
Board members, any questions? So at this point, within receipt of the letter, we're waiting for their action on the 6th. Once we find out a determination of what happens from then, then we'll kind of update you where we're at with that. This is work that's got to be done. So it'll proceed as scheduled, and we'll figure out how to pay for it, hoping that the commissioners come through on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can you make sure you use your mic?
Sorry about that. How old is the system? Do you have an idea?
How old is the system? The one at Butler Middle is the original system, so it's 21, 22 years old. We believe that the reason it's, usually you would expect them to last a little longer, maybe 30 years.
Okay.
It probably suffered some lightning strikes at one time. The one at West Oxford is, I believe, 30-odd years old, 35 maybe.
Okay. And I was just asking that because I'm wondering if we're going to start to see a domino with other systems reaching end of life.
We do. They, there are additional systems built into our master facility plan.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you think we'll need to readjust those numbers based on what we've learned at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing ever seems to go down.
All right.
Okay. So at this point, this is for your information, and as we gain information, we'll reconvene the operations committee, give them a heads up on where our next steps are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like for Dr. Winborn to explain what the options might be if the commissioners don't do what they, if they continue to do what they've been doing. We're going to have to look at some other options.
Okay.
I don't know whether you want to do that now or later.
Are you prepared to answer that?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Peace. So we discussed four options. The first would be we would use existing capital outlay funds and defer over $300,000 of other projects this fiscal year. And so the question you might ask is, well, what projects would you be deferring? And of course, those are all in the critical and high-needs category with our major systems, you know, HVAC, roofing, security, windows, some painting perhaps we would have to defer, some projects around our parking lots. Very little of it is, would be anything frivolous or cosmetic. I mean, everything we spend our money on right now is pretty much essential. So that would pose a lot of problems. The second funding option would be to use our local fund balance to pay for the difference. The third one we talked about was requesting the county commissioners to allow us to use some of that remaining $15 million they had allocated after the mold. And just to summarize, of that 15, $10 million was earmarked for HVAC, and we have since spent all of that. And about $4.5 million was allocated for roofing, and we've spent all but maybe about a million and change of that. Of course, the problem there is that we have major roofing needs. Butlerston Middle School is the next school slated to have roof replacement, and that is a massive job. That's probably, I would say, conservatively, $2 million-plus job at that school, because it's the original roof on that school, and it's starting to leak. But then the last choice would be simply to ask them to pay for that amount, because this is a life safety issue. And really, as Mr. Richardson said, we don't have an option. It has to be done.
Even you, Mr. Peace?
Thank you, Dr. Winborn.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, thank you for your work on that, Dr. Winborn. All right, Dr. McLean, I believe our next section is to talk about school consolidation and our update on that. Do you want to move? Are you good there?
I'd better stay tonight.
Okay, good, good. All right.
I screwed over.
Good for you. All right, board members. So we're at the point, if you remember from our work session last week, and then I think previously the week after that, we have been in the discussions around the consolidation effort, and we have kind of gotten to the point where you wanted to make sure that we had further community public input in this. And so what came out of that work session was a process of a community forum or a survey of such to be able to gain that information from the community back to the board members. Dr. McLean and I had a conversation with Dr. Angelo Quigg from RTI, and to help them facilitate that with us, to ask them if that's a possibility, what that looks like. And so at this point, kind of where we are standing, the thought would be is for us to record an introduction video this evening after this meeting in order that we may explain kind of where we're at, why we're there, that scenario. That would serve as a video introduction to a four-question survey that RTI will help us develop based off of research guidelines and what they can do with that. That was surrounding your questions, how the community felt about a K through 6th grade elementary and a 7th through 12th grade high school, what we could do to better improve and bring students into our high schools, and then basically kind of an open-ended question of what other consolidation, reorganization, closure thoughts did the public have for us. So after talking with Dr. Quigg probably for about an hour last week, what we have determined is they are able to help us. This is going to come at a cost for their research services. What they will do is help us develop those questions. Once we collect the data, we will give it to them to analyze, and then they are able to come back, show us the trends that are coming from the data, and they will actually come back as they present that and help us walk through some next steps to get to where are we going, what are we doing, whether it be a scenario or whether it be XYZ. We'll find that out after the data. So the thought, so two parts that we're going to need to deal with is, you as the board need to authorize how we will pay for that. The second thing is we need to develop what that timeline kind of looks like, how will we accomplish that. First thing is the approximate cost would be around $3,000 for their services. Moving into, we have expended the two line items that we have available for this school year, contracted services and our board training line. Moving into next year, we would have roughly most of that available in contracted services in order to make up roughly most of that available in contracted services. In order to make up the difference, we would need to dip into the board training budget of next year. Or, you could authorize that to come out of fund balance. I wanna give you some exact figures so that I am correct. So, next year, we have $2,893 budgeted for contracted services. The board training budget was $6,424. Am I correct with those numbers, Ms. Day?
That's correct.
So, we essentially, you could make a choice of how to pull from either one of those lines, or we could authorize that from fund balance. So, that's the first piece of what we would need to decide during this time. The second is a possible timeline. We talked with staff, talked with RTI. And the thought would be is if we record this tonight, and we are done with it, we get it to our, using our tech team, that we would be able to send that out over the July 4th holiday weekend to our students. And we are working with how we can reach other pieces of the community, charter school families, those things. We're still working on that. We would take those survey questions throughout the next week, which will be July 5th through the 9th. That catches our families that may be on vacation during the holiday. That would give RTI some time to work doing the data. And we had talked about possibly a meeting, did we say the 20th?
Yes, the 20th.
July 20th of having a called work session where RTI can come and present their information, guide us through a process of making some decisions. That would prepare the Board potentially. If you got the information you needed, and there was a clear path of where you thought we were heading, that potentially could mean that we could either call another meeting the next week, singularly, I'm sorry, we'd have to, depending on what came from that, there would either be public hearings, or there would be what the next steps would be. We have talked about how desperately it would, we would like to be able to put this to rest before the next school year, if that is a possibility. Again, not rushing anyone, not pushing the agenda, but we do realize that when these things are hanging over our head, that it does make for a very hard school year starting. So, that's kinda what I have to present to you as a decision about the money and a decision about the timeline. So, I guess at this point, let's kind of have some general discussion. Are you okay with the plan? What are your thoughts about the money? What are your thoughts about the timeline? If you have questions, those kinda things that I can answer for you. And we'll start with Ms. Williams.
Mr. Richardson, are we still planning to go out into the community with the forum format as well?
We feel like this is a better use of the time and the way to get the data to RTI. Instead of doing a face-to-face public forum, that way we can collect, we can compare apples to apples.
I'd like to-
Would be the thought.
I'd like to suggest, a lot of the parents that we would probably wanna reach, social media is gonna be probably one of the big ways, I would think. So, it sounds good.
We talked about Blackboard, social media, our news media is here tonight, asking them to help us. There are various ways to get that thing out, but thank you. Ms. Anderson?
No, I think that we are on the right track with what you just mentioned. I think that's a great way to reach out to the public. And I think that's what's very much necessary now, to let them know exactly where we stand and what we're up against. And, you know, we're doing this for our public schools and their children. Yes, very much involved with the community. Yes.
Dr. McKnight?
Ditto, to what Ms. Anderson said.
Thank you. Mr. Peace?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Who will the survey be geared to? Parents, staff, students, or all three?
I would say all three could fill it out, but it's mainly geared to our families that we serve.
Okay. And there will be community forum after this?
So, the thought would be is after this data is collected, if the Board decided it needed to have a face-to-face forum, then that could be your prerogative. However, we would still follow the general statute. If there's a closing consolidation, anything like that, there's a public hearing required. But this would be the format, the vehicle that we get public input from.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. LeBret?
Yeah, I have a question. The, so, actually, this is the money aspect of it, the $3,000. How much did we have left over before we used the money for trainings for the Tar River Study? Like, how much of that, you know what I mean? Like, how much do we usually spend in trainings and have left over?
So, usually, Ms. Day, on average, around $2,000?
So, this year, it was budgeted, as Mr. Richardson mentioned, $6,424. And as of today, if there's no accruals, $5,750 had been spent of the travel. So, the remaining was $673 at the end of this year. And the study, that architect came from Dr. Winborn's operation budget. It didn't come from the, ended up coming from the Board.
All right. So, 'cause I just wanted to make sure that I understand, 'cause, so we could use the contracted services on that, that's the $2,895 that we've got for that, as of July 1st. And then, so basically, what, only $105 would come out of our trainings budget, which is what, that's the direction I think would make the most sense, instead of using fund balance.
Any other questions? Okay. Dr. O'Leary?
Yeah. First, I wanna say, go back to what Glenda, I mean, Ms. Williams said. You know, a lot of surveys that have been done have been good, but they have left out a, sometimes a significant portion of the students and parents that we serve. And I hope we don't, you know, and I think some of us agree, let's make sure that it's not just social media. You know, even if we have to go house-to-house or something, we just have got to get that kind of input.
What I've suggested to staff is possibly utilizing our local libraries, that if we will advertise it in the newspaper, that they would be available for them to go and take that there at the library. I'm not sure how we would accomplish house-to-house.
Well, you did, I mean, I'm not, I just say that because I think we really need to do that, and you all are doing your thing. The second thing is that, would you go through and tell us, how will parents know about what we have been, the options that we've been talking about?
So, the, so, if you read the script, it talks about how we got to where we are, and that we're looking for their input. As far as the scenarios, we're not throwing those scenarios out there because-
Right.
The way you directed us was those four questions.
Okay, good. Okay. Just wanted to double-check. And I would just throw out as well, once the data is in, if there's a need for a forum with the public, I think we should definitely do that. Because I think with all we're spending and all we're doing, not having a clear set of inputs from whatever, I just think that it's something that we need to consider. Thank you.
One other thing I was just reminded of was, those surveys will be available to every school as well. And that would be where we capture the majority of our people that aren't getting it online.
Could we do some by mail?
I'm just-
Yeah. I just don't know how, again, I don't know how we decide who you send it by mail to.
I'm just-
Well, if there's a deadline on when they should be in, and what percentage are we going to look at as being what we need to draw a decision from? Because if the survey responses is very low, then we need to consider, we might need to consider that in making a decision.
I feel like we will end up getting RTI to consult with us on that. I feel like them being research gatherers, they would be able to tell us what's acceptable and what's not. But we can go back and look how many we receive versus the student population of the county. Are you asking, do we as a Board wanna decide that percentage, or?
No, I'm just saying we need to bear that in mind as we move forward. Because unless we get a certain percentage of the community as a result of this survey, it's not gonna do us a lot of good in making the decision anyway.
I agree. Anything else? Questions, comments? All right. So, what we are looking for is action from you tonight on how to fund it. And do you agree with the timeline up to the 20th that we laid out? And that would need to come as a motion from the Board.
Motion's so moved.
You gotta tell me what you wanna do.
I can't keep up with all of that.
All right. So, are you saying $3,000 from the contracted line-
Yes, yes.
And the board training?
That's correct.
And that the timeline up through the 20th, you were making a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
[laughing]
All right. Is there any further discussion?
[inaudible]
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. So, make sure you don't run out the door. You have a job to do tonight to record your part for that. All right. Well, come on back and join us.
I'll make some fog white.
All right, Board members. Thank you for that. Our next thing is item 6.03, our Spring 2021 Policy Updates. This is our second read. Staff brought these to you at our last Board meeting. These were the second part of the big spring update. Did you have any comments, Madam Superintendent, before we have any questions or comments?
No, sir. I'll just add that staff does compare these. They take time to do that with our policies, and so they've been come through at our school level, district level.
All right. As you've read through and dissected and digested all this, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Williams?
On the professional development, when they say that the teachers have to have training in the area about the children and so forth, is that something that they get to do at their pace, or is it scheduled? I was just curious how much of an extra would be on our teachers. I know it's required, but-
It is a combination. It is a combination. They also have some areas they must have by law now, in addition to their certification areas. So, it's a combination.
And I wanna say, staff did a very good job a couple of years ago, Convocation Day. And I know you've had other PD days, given a wide variety for teachers to choose from, but also trying to hit some of those required ones. Y'all did a great job with that.
Thank you. They have a good team.
Other questions or comments? All right. So, these do come to you as action tonight. And so, if your pleasure is to approve them as they have been presented to you, and these will become policy after such, if that's your pleasure, we'll take a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve-
Second.
-the policies.
I have a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mr. Peace. Is there any further discussion? All right. See you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you so much. The next item, Dr. McLean, is 6.04, Contract for Speech Language Services.
Yes, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Winborn. This is in our exceptional children's department. Dr. Winborn?
Thank you, Dr. McLean, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Ms. Niko Gorham is unable to join us tonight, but sends her regards. I've spoken with her about this. She has been working very, very hard to try to maintain an adequate staffing level for our EC teachers and speech-language pathologists and other support staff. And as you know, it's been very, very difficult. I consulted with Mr. Perry just a few minutes ago. Currently, we have 18 vacancies in EC.
Wow.
Eighteen. And Mr. Perry's been working on this problem with her, and I believe he's gonna be bringing some ideas to the Board in August to try to address this recruitment and retention, particularly in this area. But what this amounts to is us having to rely on contracted services because we are unable to staff these people. And she was holding out hope that the staff that we did have in place would stay on and be able to provide these services. But as resignations have come, it has necessitated this to be brought to the Board. And it just, it really, she tried her very best to save us as much money as she possibly could, but this became necessary just very recently. And so, this contract will be in place, allow us to provide some summer services, and then everything that's needed in the upcoming year in the IEPs for these students.
Okay. Board members, any question? That was in your package. Ms. Williams?
I just was curious. Will that be all of the speech-language services, or just part of them?
Well, we have vacancies, so we hope that if, as we hire them in the coming year, we will not have to rely on-
Why?
-much of this. That would be the goal, because this is much more expensive.
Right.
Is that, how do you-
Age, your whole problem isn't-
So, just a question with regards to that, like you said, not having to rely on the services here. So, with starting these services, is this on a month-to-month basis, so as we hire, or is it like two to four months, or is there a required timeframe for this contract?
I'm happy to take that one if it would help.
Thank you, Ms. Dufus.
Oh, okay.
We only pay them for the services we use. So, when we have a student who needs services, we tell them, we need someone an hour a week or whatever, and then they invoice us as we go.
As needed basis. Thank you.
Yes. So, this, the dollar amount in here is not to exceed $137,540.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, we would spend much, much less.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not a question, but I do want you to know why this is coming to you and others don't necessarily come. Any contract that is above $100,000, if you'll recall, we bring to our Board. So, because this is over $100,000, I have to make sure I bring it to you.
Okay. All right. This comes to you as an action item, with it being over $100,000. So, what would be the pleasure of the Board?
I would make a motion that we accept this contract as, as needed basis. Yes, with that limited amount that she said, well, it's over $100,000. But I think someone did give, but it will not exceed.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a second. A motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Ms. LeBret. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right. See you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Motion carries. Board members, if you recall at the beginning of the meeting, we added 6.05, the pink sheet in your blue folder. We have asked staff to prepare on this sheet. On the front is our Board of Education meetings. On the back, our proposed Board of Education work sessions. Meeting, regular meetings start at 6:00. Work sessions generally start at 4:30. This does, because a policy has to come to you as a action item. And so, if you'll take just a moment over to look at that, you do notice there's a couple of dates that have been moved just because of holidays. We took some work sessions out, those kinda things. Once you've had a chance to look at it, what would be the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Peace. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion? All right. See you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So, please make sure you add those to your calendar for the next year. All right. Well, I think we are ready for the ma- Well, I think we are ready for the main event.
Yes. She's ready. She is ready.
Madam Superintendent, I believe we are... 7.01 is a sole source approval contract from Ms. Day.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Our sole source information, please.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, you have two agenda items related to a purchase of Apple MacBooks. And this is something that you have done in previous years as approved the sole source exception. It's an annual approval, and it's required based on our board policy to have an exception for, from formal and informal bidding requirements. And we ask for this exception for the purchase of Apple computers to make sure that, to maintain our current standardization capability and reduced cost of ownership for our Apple MacBooks for our teachers and staff. So this first agenda item is for the approval of that sole source exception. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So newer board members, just to kind of make sure you understand, if you've noticed other contracts, we've bid out things. So what they are coming to ask for is that we do not do that because we want to stay with this current standardization. So that's why this is coming to you. Do you have questions for Ms. Day?
I do have one question. She may not be able to answer it. But the MacBooks that come to end of life, what do we do with those? Can we turn them back into Apple? Or do we sell them? Or what do we do?
I believe they are recycled by the technology department.
What we'll do originally, when we refresh these schools that are on the refresh list, is we will then take those and give them to our TAs who have the older models from like four years ago. And by the time we get to end of life, we'll recycle them and get basically what we can for them.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. This comes to you as an action item. So what would be the pleasure of the board? All right. We have a motion by Dr. McKnight. Do we have a second?
I second it.
A second by Ms. Williams. Is there any further discussion? See you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Ms. Day, 7.02, computer purchases?
So related to the motion that was just approved for the sole source, this is the purchase of those Apple laptops for our teacher refresh. And it is a request for, it's a purchase of $117,291 for 125 MacBook Airs. And there's a document included that shows which schools the teacher refresh will be for for this year. There's a schedule that we follow as far as which schools that get the refresh each year. And so we are preparing for next year for this purchase, bringing it to you now so that we can get these ordered first thing in the new fiscal year for our teachers.
Any questions for Ms. Day?
I have one question related to this to Dr. Winborn. How do we stand in terms of how many students have got the technology that we've been buying? How many have that as of now? I know for a while, because they were so overwhelmed with production that they would... Do you know, where do we stand on that?
So I believe we are now one to one.
So everybody's got one now?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Yes, sir.
Teachers, too?
Yes, absolutely. But you're correct. We, there was a back order during the past school year.
And the board might recall having approved earlier in the year in preparation for next year, and those Chromebooks arrived just in time for the end of the fiscal year. So I can announce that if I could. And that was wise to go ahead and approve that so that we have those.
All right. This comes to the board as an action item. So what would be the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. LeBret and a second by Mr. Peace to approve the contract as presented. Any further discussion? All right. See you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. 7.03. I cannot imagine you have budget amendments today.
Well, say, Mr. Richardson, board members, for the main event, the budget amendments for the end of the fiscal year. I really appreciate the board meeting this evening to, so close to the end of the fiscal year, to allow for this closeout for these budget amendments. I just wanted to take a minute to say I feel the closeout process has gone very well this year financially, but it's a lot of work on a lot of people. And so a lot of people throughout our district have worked really hard to meet deadlines and to do things, get purchases in, get invoices in to make that happen. And that is how a closeout can be successful. And so I really just want to give a shout out to everybody out there that has helped in that process. So tonight, you have budget amendments for several funds. The first fund being the state fund. And so this is budgeting for the closeout, and it's budgeting to maximize the use of those state dollars. Every dollar that we receive is allocated to Granville County. It is our goal to ensure that we have used that and we have reflected those funds used. If you're newer to this process, the big deal for a school system with the closeout is the fact that the majority of our funding is state funding, and the majority of that funding expires on June 30th at midnight. So after that, whatever is reflected at midnight on June 30th is the way it is. The books are closed, and that's how we stand. And so it's just really important, all the work that's done, built up to June, to have our, to be able to feel good about where we stand with our books at June 30th at midnight. So this is maximizing those state dollars that we are allotted. And it is budgeting a few additional dollars that we've recently received, $4,924. So our state budget will end the year $52,918,249. The next budget amendment is for the local fund, and this is no increase or decrease to the budget, but it within the line items. And again, this is budgeting for that closeout process to maximize both the state funds and then the fact that we can carry over federal funds and utilizing that. So you can see the adjustments within the local fund, but again, no change in the total budget for the local fund. The third budget amendment is the federal grants fund, and this is budgeting some additional funds that we've recently received in the federal grants fund, additional $65,321 in various line items. And I can report that at the last meeting, at the June meeting, the board approved a resolution allowing Dr. McLean to sign off on any budget amendments that might happen after this time, after this meeting, after you get this budget amendment. And I can say that, as always, something, I know something's happened. We have gotten additional money from the state as late as this morning, federal funds that have to go through a process to be budgeted. And they carry over, so that's a good thing that they carry over. But we are working on getting those budgeted, so that will most likely be a part of that. So just, yeah, very interesting that we get those funds this morning.
How much was it?
63,000. So I mean, it's not...
Is it focusing where?
Yeah. It's 60 handicap, the exceptional children federal funds. And it was an allotment from the prior, from 2020, reallocation of a 2020 allotment is what they called it. But anyway, we got it today, and so we're working on that process. But just interesting. I think every finance officer in the state was going, yes, we're glad to get those funds, but the timing is a little tricky. So the federal budget currently showing an increase of $65,321. So this adjusted budget, $28,216,565. The next budget amendment is for the capital outlay fund, and this is budgeting for, you probably recall back in the spring, we budgeted for yellow bus replacements that DPI handles, the installment agreement. The board approved the agreement a couple of months ago. And we're required in an accounting way to account for the buses that we receive in the current year. So although we budgeted for the agreement that we had in, that you approved for this fiscal year, we also needed to budget for the buses that last fiscal year, we didn't get until the fall of this year. So we have to budget for that. So that's what that is. So that's an increase of $94,974. So that's both an expense and a revenue source. The next budget amendment is the other restricted fund budget or our Fund VIII budget, and this is budgeting additional funds from various sources. You can see the largest being Medicaid funds, $180,654 that we've recently received. So the total of those that increased in the other restricted fund budget is $218,998. So we end the year with a budget of $4,337,599 in the other restricted fund budget. And the last budget amendment is for the child nutrition fund, and this is budgeting for federal commodities that we receive, the actual food commodities. Those are, again, have to be budgeted and recorded on our books. And based on what has been received to date, this is budgeting both the revenue and the expense of that, adjusting for that, as well as increasing the indirect cost, anticipated indirect cost line item for child nutrition. So child nutrition would end the year with an amended budget of $3,881,500. I'd be glad to take any questions.
I don't have a question. I have a statement that I'd like to make. I just appreciate the work that Ms. Day and whoever helps her get us this information in such a timely and professional. I mean, we can't get no better than this. And I just want her to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Peace.
I want all of my other board members to know that. We have a jewel, and we need to appreciate her, pat her on the back or something every time you see her.
Absolutely.
I wish they give a raise, but I don't have the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Peace.
All right, board members. This comes to you as an action item tonight. And so what would be the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve budget amendments as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Peace and a second by Dr. Houlihan to present the budget amendments as presented. Is there any further discussion? All right. See you none if you're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ms. Day, thank you for that. I'm sure you've got another one. Here we go. 7.04, our budget update.
So, board members, I'm presenting to you tonight a budget update for 2122, our next year's budget, the information that we have when, last week when you met and we gave, I gave a presentation, we talked about a lot of the pieces of this that are included here. But one of the things that was mentioned was that the funding that we did not receive from the county, that a decision had not been made by the Board of Education about how to handle that for the 2122 budget. And so that is the main purpose of this presentation tonight. So looking at those funds, we requested for state mandated salary and benefit increases from the county, a total request of $758,591, which included our cost of $584,115 plus the anticipated pass-through to charter schools of $174,000. What was included in the county's budget is $499,005. So the difference between that was the $259,000, that was the amount that was included as the expansion item from the county and was not entered funded. And so of that $259,000, if we had received $259,000, 23% we are projecting to go to charters, $34,000. So as we did not receive that $259,000, the shortfall in our budget is the $224,000 in that first column. That is the difference between what our cost is and the net funds that we did receive from the county. As you know, the county commissioners approved their budget on June 7th, and that amount was not included. So just giving you that. And I did want to mention, at the last meeting, a question was asked about the Senate budget and how our, what we projected, how did that compare to what was in the Senate budget? There, it's up in, you know, it's differences in different places. But I will say, the big shocker around the state is that the Senate budgets, the health insurance is about $500 more per person than what we had budgeted. And I know that that's, you know, throughout the state, people are concerned about that, about that increase in cost. So for every employee, that's 500 additional dollars that the cost will be more than was budgeted.
Ms. Day, if that was to happen, let's say it makes it to the budget process and it stays that. What happens when the budget process is past July 1st? Do those employees have to make up that $500 difference in less amount of time?
So a couple of things might happen. They might approve a mini bill that includes that, or they might. And that is our, that is the employer's cost. That is not the employee's cost. That is the employer's cost for health insurance. Because we budgeted, I mean, we budgeted $6,500 per employee, and what the Senate budget has is about $7,000, a little over $7,000 per employee for the cost for the district. So if they did not change it, and then it just approves in the budget, they might approve a change effective January 1, or they might approve a change that would be retroactive to July, and then we would owe the difference when that was approved. I mean, there's several different ways that that could play out.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. So then, looking, so what are our options? What is the, what are the Board of Education's options? So based on what the funds are used for, state mandated salary benefits, as well as the classified salary step increase, there's, there are limited options for the Board of Education because those are increased costs. So one option is to appropriate fund balance for the additional shortfall. So that's the $224,831. Include that in our fund balance appropriated. And I'll give you, later on in the presentation, I'm going to show you what that means, what that looks like in fund balance. So that's the first option. The second option is, you forgot the next line. The second option is these, again, limited options, but modify the local salary scales to eliminate the step increase for next year. If the part of that money that was for the increase in the step classified salary scale was, is calculated at $86,460. So that doesn't solve the whole problem. That would be a portion of it. And I put a few notes under here. The step increase for classified and local-scale employees is an average increase of 0.97% per employee. So it is a very small amount. And the employees that are in this category are teacher assistants, custodians, clerical, child nutrition, transportation, maintenance, coordinators, therapists, and directors. All our employees that are not, not our teachers that are on certified, the certified scale, but that are on our other scales. And of course, employee morale and trust is a... And of course, employee morale and trust is a concern for this option because employees are know the salary scale and what the step increase should be. So this, of course, this option, as I said, does not take care of the whole amount and would require fund amounts appropriated of $138,000 in addition. Excuse me. So that that is the the second option that is included here. So if you'll go to the next slide. So what does that look like for a fund balance appropriated? So this is a slide that you looked at last week. It's ugly, but it I think it helps to sort of show the history of fund balance appropriated. This original slide was the fund balance appropriated for 2122, when we had fund balance appropriated of 1.2 million. And so it shows the the makeup of that. So that's this current year, 21, the I said that wrong, in 2021. It's the fund balance appropriated for 2021 of 1.2 million. And it shows the makeup of that. So you can see the existing fund balance and then the fun the funds that were not funded by the county in the prior year, $378,000. And then the other things that are marked off, the majority of those are things that we're now funding with our temporary federal funds. So it's not coming out of fund balance, but that's the reason, because we have those funds now. So that number, that 1.2 million, became $635,000. And that's the number that we talked about back in the spring of how much we'd be appropriating fund balance for. So that's where we were to start with before the the county's decision. So the next slide. So then looking, combining all of that, under option one, if we were to appropriate fund balance for the full amount that we need for the the shortfall of the continuation funding for this year that was not funded, then we would have the $257,516 plus the $378 that was not funded in the prior year, the $224 not funded for next year's budget. So the total fund balance appropriated would be $860,518. Then the next slide is option two. So to eliminate the step increase on the classified and local scale, then we again still carry over that $257,516, the $378,000 that were not funded last year. And then that last number, rather than the $224, it's now $138,371. And so we're appropriating fund amounts of $774,058. Just looking at, okay, so what does that look like as far as total fund balance? And what does that look like with our with our total fund balance? So the next slide. So our, the last audit that we have is the June 30th, 2020 audit. We have local fund balance of 7.2 million, right at 7.2 million. We are not estimating, although we had appropriated fund balance for 2021, we are not expecting to use fund balance in this current fiscal year and may increase fund balance slightly due to the fact of not running buses, not all the the whole year. There's lots of things that were budgeted in this year that have to be budgeted continually that were not spent in this year. So we did not anticipate using the fund balance. So so saying that we would have the 7.1 million, then that fund balance appropriated in option one, $860,000, we would have 6.3 million of fund balance going into, as of June 30th, 2222. So that would be going into the 2223 year. Option two, we'd have 6.4 million in fund balance going into that year. So you can see 7.6% or 7.7% of total governmental expenditures. So that's where we would stand with total fund balance on those two options. The next slide, this is something we looked at last week as well, but just a reminder of the the budget included as well as using that fund balance. But we also are anticipating reductions in our budget of 1.7 million for next year that we are anticipating reducing our budget for in state and local funds, as well as using federal funds temporarily for for positions to the tune of $912,000. So although we have those funds to be able to do that for next year, we know those funds will be running out. And so what to do with those positions is is kind of on the table. The the next slide kind of combines all of this, you know, together as far as the total is concerned. Fund balance appropriated for 2122. So depending on the option that the Board of Education chooses, $774,000 or $860,000, those positions temporarily funded from federal funds, $912,000. So the ongoing budget shortfall is 1.7 million. And that's the the number that had been discussed previously. So the last slide is just, I come to you tonight to ask for the option, what opt what choice the board would choose as far as handling the $224,831.
Okay, board members, you've seen the presentation. You this is an action item for us tonight that essentially we need to decide where that $224,000 comes from. Option one is taking the full amount from fund balance. Option two is doing a split between fund balance and adjusting the local scale. At this point, if you have questions, comments, or if you're ready to make a motion.
Dr. Richardson, this really is not the issue in a way because we're going to have to pick up these costs from now on unless the commissioners give us the money. And that also is on top of what happened last year. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is going to be a real issue along with the other stuff. I don't know how, but we're going to have to start looking at cuts. And I hate to say that, but we just cannot continue to spend a million, a million seven to balance the budget. I don't know what the answer is, and I wish I could say, but at some point, I mean, we have 600, $500,000 of unexpected expense on the the fire alarms. If you think about it, if I'm correct now, we get, we have budgeted a million dollars something for those kinds of things. And if I'm correct, right now, we're already used half of what we what we get. I guess what I'm getting at is until the commissioners are willing to to be more realistic, I'm just just very concerned about the direction we're going. I mean, none of us want to cut anything. I mean, my gosh, nobody wants to. But at some point, we're going to have to really think through carrying employees and employee benefits through fund balance. It's just not sustainable, and it's a concern. And who knows what they'll do next year?
All right.
Ms. Day, just what is the minimum amount we need to have in fund balance?
So I had asked the auditors that sort of question to to get a gauge of what they recommend for fund balance. And for taxing, they don't have a recommendation per se for school systems. But for taxing authorities, the recommendation is eight percent, eight percent of your expenditures.
Okay.
So and and that is what they rec, I mean, it's that that's what they've said is is eight percent would be the recommendation.
Okay.
You said eight percent.
Eight percent.
Interesting.
Board members, any other comments? I'd like to take just a moment of privilege to offer my comments before we make a motion. I can go on record, hold a banner, whatever you want to say. I will not support cutting teacher salaries or classified salaries or anything to that salary schedule because of this. I don't like the idea of using fund balance, but it's our option now, or it's a option to us. But I will not do that to teachers on the backs of them because of a decision made by our commissioners. But that's just my opinion.
Good point.
I make a motion, we approve option one.
Okay, so Ms. LeBrecq makes a motion that we approve option one to take it from fund balance for this year.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. LeBrecq, a second by Dr. McKnight. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Day.
Thank you.
I feel like we need to do a cheer, six o'clock. All right, at this point, board members, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 6A, 3A, 5, Section 115C, 321, for personnel and attorney-client privilege. Do we have someone to make that motion?
Motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Peace. Do we have a second? A second by Ms. LeBrecq. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll take a 10-minute. Members, we are now in open session. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve certified and classified personnel exhibits as presented.
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Peace and a second by Dr. McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we have a motion to approve the administrative contracts as presented in closed session. Do we have a motion for that?
So move for that.
We have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything further?
No, sir. I don't have anything except to say we will have a strategic meeting coming up in July on the 13th and 14th. And we invite all of you, our board members, to join us if you can. I'll send the exact times out. If you'd like to come by, please come on by.
All right, board members, anything from you? All right, you do have other dates there to remember. We will get you the July dates as they become available. And I would encourage you, as you talk with citizens and family members, to do encourage them next week with this survey as it comes out to make sure that they are aware that it's available there. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion by Mr. by Dr. McKnight. Is there a?
Second.
Second by Ms. LeBrecq. Do we have any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, this meeting is.